The regular twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. Please note that our meetings will open to the public here at City Hall. Will continue to be available in strange ways. As well as the community media center channel and website. Now we'll begin as we do every evening with the flags of the flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is sand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As a courtesy to everyone, please take a moment to silence your cell phones or any other electronic devices might have with you that might disrupt the meeting. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. And I believe the copies of the agenda, for those who are here in the room, are available up here in the front. Before we begin, just like to mention, we have a guest with us tonight. Really pleased to have Commissioner Dennis Frazier with us this evening. Commissioner Frazier is a frequent visitor to our meetings and has been throughout his time as county commissioner. And I think that, you know, as, you know, I think we all really appreciate, you know, the attention that you've paid to the city's interests and needs over the time you've been commissioner and, you know, the value of having you here. You're frequently to hear the concerns that you have when things are going on in the city is really very valuable to us. Do you have anything while you're here?
I just say I appreciate that very much. I do believe that cooperation between city and county is imperative if you want to work together and get things accomplished. Because, I mean, you're basically right in the middle of the county, so we have to kind of work together. And I like coming to these meetings to see firsthand what's going on with the city. Because I do read it in the paper, but seeing firsthand is much better. So I appreciate being here. Thank you for that.
Well, thank you. You don't get to read much in the papers, so they don't cover us. So we're glad you come here in person to find out. Commissioner, it was always great to see you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
First, we'll consider the approval of minutes. From the, well, actually, before we do that, I need to read the statement for the record about our closed meeting of Monday, May 23rd. In accordance with the general provisions article, section three dash three zero six C two of the annotated code of Maryland. And without objection, it's noted that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that the common council met in a closed meeting on Monday, May 23rd, 2022, at eight twenty two P M. Pursuant to general provision article, section three dash three zero five B ten, to discuss public security. As the public body determined that the public discussion would constitute a risk to the public or public security, including the deployment of fire and police services and staff, and the development and implementation of emergency plans. And it was proved unanimously. All of the staff members were in attendance, city administrator Imhols, and city attorney Levad. Common council took no action during the session, and the closed meeting adjourned at nine P M. Now let's move on to the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the council meeting of May 23rd and the closed meeting on the same night. And I'd like to get a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Then a motion by Mr. Dehoff and a second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Thank you. New presentation from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So July marks Park and Recreation Month. And I know our Recreation and Parks Department has an activity planned every single day for the month of July. And if you are on social media or accessing the calendar, you can see them sort of pop up repeatedly over the last couple of weeks as they've loaded their program in for children and families and everyone within the community. So I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Since Mrs. Gruber isn't here, I'm just going to stay right here in my seat and we'll hand it off after the meeting. So Parks, Park and Recreation Month, July 2022. Whereas park and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Westminster, and our parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Westminster, Maryland recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Dr. Mona Becker, mayor of the city of Westminster, in conjunction with the common council, do hereby proclaim July as Park and Recreation Month. In the city of Westminster, Maryland, adopted this 27th day of June, 2022. Spend some time outside in July. There'll be lots of activities to do.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. Certainly, you know, a good message for everybody. It is an important, important month because so many people in the city, they're real experience what the city is through our recreational events and our city parks. It's almost always a positive experience, I hope and I think.
I can, I can speak for Kings Park as I know a council member, Gilbert Penn, that it is utilized a lot, a lot. Every single day, all day, pickleball, tennis, basketball, kids on the playground.
Absolutely.
Picnics, and I'm sure.
Mr. President, I think we're going to have snowballs again this year.
Every Thursday.
Oh, alright.
At Locust Lane.
We're good.
Every Thursday, snowballs. What?
Moving into Locust Lane this year?
It was?
Last year was over at the.
It was over at the playground last year.
I'm not sure then, maybe. Snowballs on Thursday, don't.
Well, maybe Ms. Imhols can make sure that Ms. Gruber wants the snow because.
Can you prioritize that, please?
You wouldn't want Mr. Dehoff to miss a snowball.
You can, you can print out the calendar off of the website and tell you exactly where it is.
They are at Locust Lane.
They're at Locust Lane. I'll be darned.
Alright, there you go. Alright.
We have our par.
Thank you. We do. Consent calendar, we have several items on the consent calendar this evening. We have a motion to approve the consent count.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Then a motion by Mr. Dehoff and a second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. Consent calendar is approved. Report from the mayor, Dr. Becker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, it's been an awful quiet six weeks for me. I have not been doing tons in the city since my knee replacement about, just about six weeks ago. I was able to attend the Juneteenth celebration for a brief period of time. And I like to let everyone know that the attendance was well attended. I read a proclamation from the city of Westminster and presented it to Mrs. Diane Hurd at the beginning. And that was followed by some music. There were vendors set up along Main Street on that side. That was also the same day as beer and barbecue, which I was not allowed to walk to. It was limited to a half a mile distance from the house that day. But I wanted to just point out that, what?
I want to pick John.
I, it was, it was busy. But, but it's been, so it's been pretty quiet for me the last couple of weeks, which has been good. But I'm getting back to a hundred percent. I'd just like to echo what our council president said at the beginning and take a minute to thank Commissioner Frazier for his dedication to the city. I, when I first was appointed to the council, I took Commissioner Frazier's seat when he was elected to become a commissioner. And, you know, sort of followed in his footsteps there a little bit at the beginning. And so I've been able to work with Commissioner Frazier as a council member for four years, as a mayor for a year. And you are absolutely correct that the relationship between commissioners and the city of Westminster is incredibly important for business to be done within our region. So just again, I'd like to thank you for your support of the city over the last eight years. And you will be missed as a commissioner.
Thank you very much.
If it's all Mr. President.
Alright, thank you. Move on now to reports from standing committees, as we always do with our liaison to the Arts Council, Mr. Dehoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the mayor, from all reports, did a great job with the proclamation and with Juneteenth, and I really appreciate that. I was on the committee. And by all reports, Juneteenth, the first celebration went really well. And it was also, it was sponsored by the NAACP and the Arts Council, but the city of Westminster and background was helpful every step of the way. And we really, we really super appreciate that. I want to call to the council's attention and to the folks that are watching the meeting this evening that tomorrow is a great intellectual experience at Carroll Community College, in which my wife and I are sponsoring a family movie, Clifford the Big Red Dog. I'm looking forward to seeing everyone at that event, and there will be a quiz.
At the next council meeting?
At the next council meeting, there will. My kids loved Clifford the Big Red Dog. So when, when the executive director came to me and asked if we would sponsor it, of course, we were more than happy to. The executive director, Lynn Griffith, is just doing a wonderful job over at the Carroll Arts Center. And she has worked hard, of course, maybe, maybe a lot of folks aren't aware. She is a, she's played in orchestras all over the world. She plays the French horn. We're very, very fortunate to have her in Carroll County. And she's worked hard to bring the Baltimore Symphony Orchestra to Carroll County. They're going to come on Saturday, July the 23rd. A Wynwood quintet is going to play Peter and the Wolf at the Carroll Arts Center at 11 o'clock. And then the full orchestra will be at the Carroll Community College's Rotary Amphitheater at seven o'clock. And the show is billed as Music for Maryland, and we're really, really looking forward to that. That's my report, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dehoff. Mr. Hoff is not here for the Economic and Community Development Committee, so we will refer that until he's present again. Finance committee, on behalf of Finance Committee, I have nothing to say, which I think is a relief to Ms. Imhols since we finished the budget. And we have, we are not taxing her anymore at the moment, you know, with any taxes. We'll give her a couple of weeks off at least before we take up anything else. Personal committee, Ms. Gilbert.
The personal committee will be gearing up with some work over the summer. But I wanted to make people who are watching aware and possibly those in the audience aware of the numerous positions we have available, and I will repeat the word numerous positions we have available. We have a comprehensive planner one, a comprehensive planner two, also known as Main Street Manager, or that be part of their duties, Director of Finance, Property Inspector, Entry Level, and lateral police officer positions, a communication specialist, Family Fitness Center Attendant, Recreation Program Coordinator, Summer Camp and Recreation Program. Why do I have Recreation Program Coordinator twice? Well, maybe that's because I really am stressing that job. I don't know why. And if that doesn't interest you, we have wastewater on third shift, plant operator one and two mechanic. And if that still doesn't interest you, we have a equipment operator in our streets department. So please check out our website for full description and applications.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Gilbert, and I appreciate you bringing those up because we're very much afraid that if we do some of these jobs, Ms. Imhols is going to construct doing them herself.
I think she already does them herself. I think she already does them herself.
She might make me start doing the rest. Which would be very bad for the safety of the Westminster. Speaking of safety, Mr. Kavachi.
What a segue, Mr.
He is right on it today.
That's what happens when you take a month off.
Yeah. So it's a little bit of a lengthy one, so we'll get through it as quickly as possible, but it's important stuff. Police Department had in-service training for some of its staff over at the Public Safety Center, and it was a grant-funded program related to opioid overdose prevention. So they completed that. That's important stuff. And kudos to the chief. It's almost every meeting I report on something that they're doing related to opioid prevent opioid use or overdose prevention. So great work there. We had two different groups of professional shoplifters that were operating in the, in the area, not just here in Westminster, but throughout the Baltimore region. One group was hitting altas, another one was hitting D S W. And our officers were able to make apprehensions in both cases. So they probably not only helped out our own stores here in community, but they probably helped a number of other stores and communities as well. And that seems to be a little bit of a theme. I seem to recall there was a bank robbery group going around robbing banks all over the place, and we caught them when other folks couldn't. And I know that there's been at least one or two other of these shoplifting groups that we've nailed as well. So great work, chief, and I'm sure I speak for everyone saying, you know, that we're very appreciative of that. There was a promotion from sergeant to lieutenant by Tim Reif. He scored number one in the interview process. And he did some additional training that really, you know, put him above and beyond so that he was able to be promoted to lieutenant. So that's wonderful to see. There was a incident over on Jenny Drive where a firearm was discharged. And our department immediately got involved, did a lot of investigation. They made several arrests and recovered two firearms related to that incident. So outstanding work. You know, it's just another testament to the great work that they do within the Westminster Police Department. Held a couple of community meetings with some folks just to get some good input on community policing. Had a nice end of year event at the end of the school year, involved kickball, disc jockey, cookout, all those types of things. So that's great community building and bonding things that are important. We had a promotion to PFC by Luke, Lucas Eli, is that right? Am I pronouncing that right? And then the last thing I wanted to touch base on was that, well, we also made a number of significant drug-related arrests. I don't want to skip over that. That's a really important one. And we've been, that's been pretty consistent here relatively recently. We've made quite a few arrests related to drug dealing in the community, and they're working very hard to keep that up. You know, I've gotten a little feedback from a few citizens recently that it's very obvious to them that they're out there working very hard, and it seems like there's just less shenanigans going on in the community than what maybe people have seen previously. And I think that's directly related to those efforts. Then the last thing, and this is a nice one. And again, we've had a couple of these also that have popped up that I've been able to, you know, come here and read to you guys. And it's just one more. So there was an incident, or an individual, I'm sorry, that, and I apologize, my Adobe is not launching this letter. There it is, thank you. There was a homeless individual that clearly appeared to be in a crisis situation. And Sergeant Donovan from the Westminster Police Department got involved and helped this individual over the course of a number of days and worked with him. And ultimately, through his efforts, was able to get him into a facility to be able to get some treatment and help. And a number of departments, the Carroll County Health, I'm sorry, the Carroll County Hospital, Carroll County Health Department, as well as, I think, the Fire Department, maybe, all commented to the chief and to the Westminster Police Department, what a wonderful job Sergeant Donovan did, getting this individual the help that he needed. You know, and that's the type of thing that I think we see a fair amount from our police officers that are, they're not just out there busting heads and, you know, using their bracelets all the time. They're actually caring for our community and doing things that, you know, help, help people, not just, you know, crime-related stuff. So kudos to Sergeant Donovan. Please pass our gratitude on to him. I'm sure, again, I speak for everybody up here that, you know, we're grateful for that kind of community policing chief. So it's a pretty, pretty solid report. And I know, I know there's some other things probably that you're going to touch on that I did not. So that's all I have, Mr. President. I'll make it up with the short public safety.
I know, why don't you go ahead and do that, Mr. Kavachi?
So it's going to be very brief. We finished the permanent Bond Street Water, Water, right, not sewer, water repair. That's it.
The shortness of your report has nothing to do with Mr. Glass's impending retirement, that's it.
Not that I'm aware of.
Recreational Parks Committee, Mr. Dehoff.
Lots of activities in the month of July. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and we are well aware of that. That's great. Technology Committee, we are in the process of scheduling a meeting. Now that the mayor is up and around again, and look forward to having some important discussions there soon. Move on now to council comments and discussion. This is the opportunity for council members to bring up any other topics or make any, make any comments they went to on others issues that were not in their committee reports or are not elsewhere on the agenda. Mr. Kavachi.
So, Mr. President, I'm going to echo you and the mayor, but I'm even going to go a little step further. You know, I'm grateful I had the opportunity to serve with Commissioner Frazier, his entire tenure here on City Council. And he's excellent to work with on the City Council. I've also had the pleasure of working with him for the entire tenure of his time as a commissioner, and he's been excellent to work with there, too. There've been numerous things that have come up over the years that we've gone to him for help with, and he's always been there to help us. Or, which I really appreciate about him, is he's also told me, yeah, that's just not going to happen. And it's the way it is. And he's a straight shooter. That's the thing I think I like the most about Dennis, is you know what you got. He doesn't play games. He tells you like it is. And the going further part, right, wrong, or indifferent, he's running for delegate. And I think we, the city, would benefit greatly by him being a state delegate for our area because I truly believe he would represent us in a very positive way. And I think he would work hard to make sure that the city of Westminster is represented as well as possible in Annapolis. So I'm hopeful that you'll be successful in your bid to be a delegate. So I have, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Mr. Dehoff.
I just wanted to echo Mr. Kavachi's remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
I have a couple of things I wanted to, since it's been almost four weeks, I believe, since we have met. I wanted to extend a thank you to the American Legion for their work on the Memorial Day Parade. It was great to be back. Not that I was watching the parade, but having folks observe the parade. It was a beautiful day. The two ceremonies I attended afterwards were all done well, honoring all those who had died in battle. I wanted to thank Mr. Glass for yet another updated wastewater tour earlier this month. It allowed me to kind of catch up on the progress of the wastewater plant, the upgrades, checking in on water reuse initiative and how that's going. And happened to snap a couple of nice pictures since we are kind of low on those Dr. Glass pictures. So I was able to squeeze a few of those into the camp, into the phone and wish him well on his now kind of close impending retirement. I, along with Councilman Pecorero, Ms. Imhols, and Mr. Depot, attended the M M L convention. As always, it was a great point for networking and also the classes that were offered through the academy. So I enjoyed that this summer. And I also want to echo everyone else's thoughts regarding Mr. Frazier. But I'll take it another step further, along with Councilwoman Kavachi, and remind everyone that July 19th is our primary election voting day. From seven A M. to eight P M. Afterwards, there are, after that July 19th date, there's a couple of forums that will be occurring on July 28th and July 30th. So please check out those so you can educate yourselves on your candidates and vote accordingly. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. It hasn't been a while since we met, so I'll just say, you know, I also wanted to thank city staff and lots of other folks for the great events that we've had a chance to participate in since the last meeting, including the Memorial Day Parade, which I was pleased to be able to represent the city at the ceremony after the, you know, after the event. As I did at the Corbus Charge event the other day. I want to note that during the time, the time when I represented the city, did not receive any additional salary since the mayor wasn't there. Nor did I receive miles since I walked to all these events, but I was glad to be here. Got to go to. I wouldn't have your job on a bet. Didn't get to go to M M L as well, as Ms. Gilbert said. And I wanted to also mention that, a couple of things, that in addition to all the great sessions, first of all, our city attorney, Ms. Levad, was also there. She was once again reelected to represent all the other municipal attorneys around the state, you know, on the executive committee of board directors, which I think is, you know, a distinct honor for the city that, you know, her peers, they respect her enough to want her to continue to represent all of them. So it's great to have her as our attorney since they pay attention to her. Also, just note that some other Carroll Countyans were elected to the M M L Board of Directors, and we're pleased to have so many Carroll Countyans serving there to represent, you know, us if we ever need any help there. So that's, that's also good to know as well. And I think that's all I had. So we'll, yeah, we'll move on to our next item, which is ordinances and resolutions. We have no ordinances and resolutions before us tonight, of which I'm aware. Unfinished business is after that, and there is no unfinished business, of which I am aware. We have one item under new business. For that, we will turn to our city administrator.
Thank you, sir. City's annual cybersecurity insurance through Alliant Insurance Services expires on June 30th, 2022. The cost of renewal is $157,000, which was included in the fiscal year 23 budget. The Carroll County government also uses Alliant for cybersecurity insurance, and their cost is similar. Following Maryland agencies have experienced cyber attacks in the last year. The Maryland Health Department in December 2021 took almost six weeks to restore the data to 95% of pre-breach levels. Prince George's County Government, December 2021, this ransomware attack impacted their timekeeping function. We're, how do I say that? Wester County Government in April 2022, which included a breach in the county government email account that contained limited personal information belonging to about 3,000 government and Board of Education employee and retiree accounts. The annual cost of data breach report featured research by the Honoma Institute indicated that data breach costs rose from 3.86 million to 4.24 million, the highest average total cost in the 17-year history of this report. According to the SOFA State of Ransomware 2020 report, the average ransomware remediation cost in the United States is $622,596.18. The city's technology department, our I T department, continues to work thoughtfully and collaboratively with all city departments to ensure that the city procedures, practices, and technology protects our data and infrastructure. And therefore, staff recommends that the mayor and common council renew the cybersecurity insurance with Alliant Insurance Services Inc.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Imhols. Let's get this properly before, the council, they have a motion to approve the renewal.
Motion to approve.
The motion, is there a second? And then a second by Ms. Gilbert. Thank, motion by Mr. Dehoff and a second by Ms. Gilbert. Session, so questions from Ms. Imhols.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gilbert.
I guess I have more of a comment maybe than a question. I know this came up and we're really close to that June 30th date. As far as preparing for next year, is there a way, I mean, is there a way that we can determine whether or not this cost is an average cost, or whether there's other companies out there that would be a little less? Or what we could do maybe to prepare ourselves more instead of dishing, you know, making sure that we're doing everything we should instead of just tossing the money out to for insurance purposes?
It's my commitment for fiscal year 24, which is this time next year, but a little earlier, as we're preparing that budget, to have done this research, to make sure that the money that's in there is, and is what we're looking for. But I'm told by staff that they have done that and that this, this is what the staff recommends. I personally haven't had a chance to look through, to be involved in those discussions yet. But we will make sure that we've done a thorough analysis in advance. And I don't want to indicate that we haven't done that. And I don't want to indicate that we haven't done a thorough analysis. We have. It just hasn't come in front of council. And I'd like to give council an opportunity to see that in advance.
Thank you.
So I usually hang back, but let me just say, I was very concerned about this last year as well. And, you know, I think that, you know, I want to note that Ms. Imholtz was not with us last year. Right when we had this conversation, did not have the benefit of hearing about this. And it's one of those things where somebody should have put her on a ticker and to remind us that this was coming up. And, you know, our IT director is gone, and Ms. Imholtz is new, and we had the finance director, you know, who would have also been doing this. So unfortunately, that confluence of events led us to, once again, being a little bit surprised by the imminence of this and the fact that we need to make a decision quickly. I think that one of the things that we asked last year, and, and there was, there were differing opinions on it. And it was about whether or not we could spend this money more profitably to the city by trying to be better prepared to handle cyber attacks. Mr. Davidson said he could do a lot. He could not guarantee at that time that, you know, we would be protected against everything. But he felt that we could do a lot, you know, so, you know. So we, we made the call last year to go ahead and do it with the hope that we would plan and look into it this year. And, you know, obviously, that wasn't something that we were able to make happen, you know, through, through, for the reasons I mentioned earlier. Last year, when we talked about this, I don't believe, I think we looked in the, we asked if Legit carried this. And I think the answer last year was that they did not. And I don't know if that has changed or not, but since we do so much else with Legit, I'm wondering if we could look into that as well and see if, you know, you know, because they do such a good, good job in managing our insurance interests in other areas. If going forward, if we could look into that, to the extent that we do find that we need this. Also, I think that, you know, it might be worth consulting with somebody to, you know, and, you know, you know, find out what well-prepared municipalities are doing to alleviate the need for this, if that's possible to do. And I know Ms. Imholtz just indicated she's gonna undertake that effort, but certainly, I think it's something that, you know, we'll all see happen. You know, regardless of the outcome of this discussion. So, you know, you know, I regret that we, we have to make a quick decision again. You know, I think it's the prudent decision to make to, you know, to go ahead and take the insurance. And, you know, I think that, you know, we, we need to, we should have a little more conversation here this evening to make sure it's something that, you know, the majority of the council is comfortable with. But, yeah, I just wanted to say, my view is that I think that that's probably, you know, reluctantly, that's probably what makes the most sense. Anybody else wish to, Mayor?
Mr. President, the $157,000, the cost of the renewal, is that what was budgeted?
Yes.
Exact, exactly. So, okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Deha.
We had an excellent presentation last year, and we don't want to discuss publicly a lot of the things that we've done. But we've done a lot. But I think I would appreciate if we would have another closed executive meeting and review what has been accomplished since that meeting. I was just looking for the meeting. When was that meeting?
It was after the...
It was that, it was that, it was after we had, yeah, it was after we had to make the decision, yeah. But I would appreciate if we were to be able to have the opportunity to review what it is that we've accomplished and what we need to accomplish in the future. And that would need to be in an executive session. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty unhappy about this, but I don't, I don't know what else to do.
Right? Anyone else? I'm sorry. No, I'm, I'm, anyone else wish to hear?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
So I'm sure you all remember I was the lone dissenting vote last year on spending the money for this insurance. And I will be again this year, I'm sure. I, at the end of the day, I, you know, I, I see that number 608 or $610,000 is the average cost for a data breach. And we'll now be at $300,000 spent on insurance, so we're half the cost right there if we didn't take the insurance. And I, I just guess the biggest problem for me is the insurance doesn't prevent anything that you talk about in terms of those breaches from happening. Insurance doesn't prevent any of that. All the insurance does is potentially compensate us for the work that it takes to recover from that incident. And I don't know that it does anything in terms of making that recovery faster or quicker or, or any of those things. I think it just compensates us for the financial loss that clearly is, is significant to the tune of $600,000 on average, and it could be more than that for us. It could be eight or $900,000 for us to recover from a data breach. But for me, at $157,000, it only takes a relatively small number of years to eat that money right back up. And I'm, I'm personally of, of the mind that we take that risk and, and take that money and put it into more robust cybersecurity, better equipment, better training, better, you know, if we, if even requires more staff, I'd prefer to do that. So, once again, I, I plan to vote against it, Mr. President. So I, you know, feel like I have to explain why I'm gonna do that. And, you know, we don't agree on everything, and that's okay. There's nothing wrong with that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Deha.
I had strongly considered voting against it, but I don't know, I don't know what the alternative is. I don't, I mean, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close my eyes and hold my nose and, and probably vote for it. But I, I had strongly considered, because I think this is nuts. $300,000, that was exactly what I came up with, $300,000. And that buys, that buys a lot of security, extra personnel, extra measures. I don't know what to do. And again, we're in a position where, I, I mean, I did send a memo out in December the 9th that we ought to take a look at this. I mean, this is nuts. This is a lot of money. And I'm just not sure what return we're getting off of it. We have an excellent IT department. I mean, it's not like, it's not like we don't have folks that are working on this.
We do have a good IT department. We don't have an IT director right now.
Well.
And, you know, my concern, frankly, as I look at this, is, you know, as you said, I'm not sure what the alternative is.
I don't know what the alternative is.
The alternative is that something goes wrong, and we had the opportunity to be insured, and we were not insured. And it is, you know, significantly more costly than $150,000. And, you know, we've got to explain, you know, why we, why, why we didn't do this.
The fiduciary responsibility that we have, right, right, right.
To take this class, it's, you know, I just, I'm just saying, you know, I, you know, I've looked into it, I've looked into it last year, I've looked into it this year, and, you know, I think that, you know, it just, it, it, you know, the whole point of insurance is, you know, to try and, you know, protect yourself against something that you hope isn't going to happen. And, you know, we all hope this isn't gonna happen. We're working to make sure it doesn't happen. You know, our IT staff works to make sure it isn't going to happen. You know, we've got, you know, they're, they're constantly sending out emails. I get them, you know, I'm sure all of you do, you know, to try and replicate phishing scams. So far, I haven't been caught, but, you know, that's, I've been fortunate. That does, I'm sure, not every city employee can say that. I'm sure a few people have clicked on the links, you know, when they shouldn't have. And that's all it takes. You know, it doesn't matter how good a job they do. You know, all it takes is somebody who wasn't paying attention for a minute, wasn't thinking it through for a minute, and they click on the link and somebody's in. And there's not anything that all their, that they've been doing can do to have stopped that. So, you know, I just think that, you know, we're, you know, for right now, until we've learned more, you know, I think that we're better off going ahead and doing this. And, you know, I respect Mr. Kavachi's concerns. I certainly share them.
I share them.
You know, and, and I, you know, I don't discount, you know, the value of, of, you know, kind of, you know, going in a different direction. It just makes me too nervous, you know, and I'm, I'm not, I'm just not saying one about it. I just, I just think we need to, you know, from my perspective, I feel that we're better off going ahead and returning insurance for another year. Let's, let's give Ms. Imholtz and new IT director a chance to take a look at this and report back to us. In the technology committee, we'll start meeting regularly and, and, you know, be looking into this with her. And we'll have a chance to satisfy ourselves and our colleagues that, you know, that, you know, one way or the other, that we've got a thoughtful position going forward, not one that we're making once again if you ask me. So that's, that's how I look at it.
I call, I call the vote. I, I, this is, yeah, this is so uncomfortable.
Well, it's not uncomfortable. I mean, it's difficult. But, you know, look, it's a, it's a choice we have to make. And again, you know, as Mr. Kavachi said, you know, we can think this thing through. We could have differing opinions. I, I don't, you know, I don't have a problem with, you know, his concerns. I think his argument makes sense. I just, you know, I just can't go there tonight, you know, and, you know, he's a braver man than I am. That's all I can say. But, you know, and at the same time, Mr. Kavachi knows a little something about security, so I, I respect his opinion on this. But, you know, again, that's, you know, I should, you know, I tell. If nobody else has any comments or thoughts, or make one or two, all those in favor of approving the renewal of the policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay?
Nay.
All right, and I often do this, but I'll record my vote as we get there. All right, thank you. Move on now to departmental reports. Ms. Imholtz.
Thank you, sir. I want to remind everyone that July 5th, our offices will be closed on Monday, July 5th, in observation of the July 4th holiday. You'll see, we've got a few staff that are out of the building. That's a few people that are on vacation right now. So I am going to take the recreation department report, although I am a poor substitute for Ms. Grover. They are busy preparing for the month of July events. We do, every day in July, we do a recreation event, believe it or not. So I just want to go through a couple of those exciting events that are gonna take place before our next council meeting. On July 1st, there's patriotic tie-dye day at City Park, where you could either bring your own supplies or you could purchase them there. But you need to preregister for that event, for those that are interested. It's from 1:00 to 3:00. Of course, we've got the farmer's market on Saturdays. The first 50 kids that attend the downtown Westminster Farmer's Market on July 2nd will receive a free activity book and a pack of crayons. There will be a self-guided walking history tour of Westminster on July 3rd, which I'm pretty excited about. And those tour brochures, brochures can be picked up at the fitness center. July 4th, of course, is the Old Fashioned July 4th Celebration, which will be my first in Carroll County. That's at the Farm Museum on July 5th.
Do we drink Old Fashioned at that?
July 6th, we're gonna make bees' wax candles with the Carroll County Beekeepers Association. And as the mayor indicated, on July 7th, we're gonna have snowballs at Locust Lane. That culminates on Friday, July 8th, with the Free Outdoor Movie Night Trolls World Tour, 8:00 PM, City Park. Bring your chairs and blankets. I want to thank our staff, and I mean the whole staff, for the very, very fun and entertaining afternoon for beer and barbecue. That includes the police department, the rec department, the public works department, the IT department, the finance department. Takes a whole lot of staff to put on that event. There were a lot of people there. I think it was a really lovely day. The weather was beautiful.
Might have been our biggest event ever.
Yeah, it might have been our biggest event.
I think it was.
It was, and it, it went well. There were a lot of hiccups, which was nice. That event, as I mentioned, took half the staff to put on, so we're always looking for volunteers. If any of you are interested in volunteering for that stroll and every other stroll. So we, we need help checking IDs, putting wristbands on, doing those sorts of things at the gates. There's a bunch of running errands on the day of, from this booth to that booth. So if anyone's ever interested in working one of those events, when I say working, I mean volunteering. We're always looking for volunteers. As council member, I can't remember who mentioned it. Someone mentioned that we went to the Maryland Municipal League for the conference this summer. I also was able to attend that. I met with most of the secretaries at the state level to talk about funding opportunities for the city, for the many, many, many capital improvement projects that we have in our budget. And was able to identify grant sources that I was unaware of prior to that. And funding opportunities that may be created as a result of some of the conversations that I had. So I thought it was a useful way to spend my time and hopefully will provide additional funds for the city moving forward in the future. Okay, with that, I am going to move on to the HR department. Ms. McCullough, you're off first.
Good evening. The human resources department, we continue to assist all departments across the board for recruiting. Ms. Gilbert had mentioned all of the positions that we have available. Please go to our website to apply. On June 14th was the commencement for Carroll Leadership. I was, graduated on that day. So that was very exciting, a nine-month program that went very fast. That time learned a lot. And that, that completes my report.
I am signed up to start the Carroll Leadership Program in the fall, now that Ms. McCullough is finished, as well as one of our police officers, hopefully, so that's, yeah, a new way for me to learn even more about Carroll County. We are going to move on to our public works department. Mr. Glass will have his final council meeting at the city in his official capacity at the next meeting. So we have one more meeting to meet with Mr. Glass. Can you give us an update from the public works department?
It's pending.
First thing I was gonna mention, so. We have a number of projects that are in process, either in engineering or requests for bids or under construction, et cetera, which is really a good thing. This is the start of that robust budget that Ms. Imholtz put together. I think we talked about that a few meetings ago, so how the work begins. But again, quite a number of projects that are in process. Dr. Kavachi talked about Bond Street. We were able to take that rough road ahead, sawing down. Not if anybody's driven that recently, but of course, that was the road that was, was destroyed because of the water main break. But probably, I have to tell you what to do, Tom, but it's gonna be people driving fast on that road. It's the first thing that happens when they got a smooth road, so.
We've already got complaints. We've already got complaints.
Then on 6:30, we'll have the, do our final presentation with the USBR, the prayer of reclamation about our water reuse project. So shortly after that, matter of fact, the next day on 7/1, we'll be providing that presentation goes, as I'm sure it will, we'll be taking down our share of the money then from the, from the grant as well. So that kind of concludes at least that portion of the water reuse project with the United States. And then the last thing's already been said, but this is my second and last council meeting, not that I'm counting, but to talk again one last time. That's all I have.
Mr. Glass, can you give a quick update on the Main Street Water Replacement Project?
So we have, I think there are 90% drawings that are in now. Waiting on an engineer's estimate, but I think it's gonna go much faster, or the engineer has envisioned it, you know, much faster than, than I thought it would. But we'll, so we'll be that engineer's estimate very soon. We'll still be waiting on the, the permit to board and jack onto the railroad. They really have a lot of power in as far as what happens.
They really do.
Jurisdiction. So, so we'll have that to go yet, but the limits of the, of the water line replacement is from the Forts of the River, Pennsylvania Avenue to Longwell. That's the only stretch that has not yet been completed. Anybody that's looked at your friend like the time or remember the mayhem that took place on the north end of town, or the, I guess that would be the west and north end of town when we did Pennsylvania Avenue as well. And then the east end as well, when State Highway was doing their, their work there before we took that part of the street out. And then the east end as well, um, when State Highway was doing their, their work there before we took that part of the street over. The part in front of the library is basically just was, um, that's ours. We've never, um. Um, renewed the water line in that line, in that, um, area yet, so, uh, that's the last stretch for that, uh. The whole entire water line to be, uh, twelve inch long, and, um, and that will come finish that project.
Sure you don't want to see that out, Mr. Glass?
I do, but from a distance.
A thousand miles from Florida.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we will move on to the planning department. Mr. Devo.
Thank you. So for the thirty-second year, the city of Westminster has been recognized as Tree City USA. City's again been recognized as a Maryland plant that's people-loving and nurturing trees unity. And Main Street America and Main Street Maryland has again certified that the city of Westminster has been recognized as a twenty twenty-two accredited program. On June first, the District Commission approved a tax credit request for home improvements, and in addition, it's seventy-two West Green Street. On June ninth, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a twenty percent upward adjustment to the allowed. Um, Stonegate Residential Development Building Permit, being allowed forty a year. The twenty percent now allows forty-eight. And that is for the calendar year of twenty twenty-two. So they are going strong, as you can imagine. Uh, they forwarded an annexation number seventy-three for four, for Malcolm Drive and annexation number seventy-four for two oh seven and two oh nine Greenwood Avenue. To the Mayor and Common Council with a favorable recommendation. And they also forwarded a recommendation to approve ordinance number nine forty-two, allowing microbreweries and pub breweries in the P I Plant Industrial Zone. To the Mayor and Common Council. On June twenty-first, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved a verret request to yard setback requirements at ninety-nine North Ralph Street. To allow for detached garage rebuilds. And as always has been mentioned, the farmer's market is open on Saturdays from eight A M. to noon. At the Conway Lodge along River Avenue. Um, just numbers about the farmer's market, the numbers continue to be good. And we continue to get positive feedback from vendors and guests. And finally, I would just like to welcome Smoothie King, that located in Westminster Shopping Center at Tangler Road and Route one forty-two to the city. They are now open and operating. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Devo. We will round out our departmental reports with the police department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this Friday, July one, the, uh, a, a good portion of the police reform legislation kicks in. So I just finished a, a pretty lengthy policy and procedure update. Waiting on the Maryland Police and Corrections Training Commission to found with their statewide lease discipline matrix, which they published this morning. So I was able to use that verbiage to finish where we need to be and put it in our software system, so we'll have that up running July one. Also starts the process of, um. Working through the, uh, police accountability board at the county level and the administrative charging committee. Uh, which also goes into effect July one. Um, along those lines, we have, um, acquired the I A Pro. Software system, and that'll allow us to fulfill our obligation to have the public portal. Uh, we underwent our initial, uh, training and configuration for that system. It, it, it is impressive, and I think it'll help us to consolidate a number of our administrative tasks. I mean, with that, but with use of force, vehicle pursuits, things like that. And it'll also allow us to produce a lot of, um, reports that we may be required to produce with data. Uh, we offered, uh, conducted a final interview and offered. Uh, a new, the new grant-funded case manager for our, it'll be a quick response team to, uh, a young lady named. Uh, Brooke Sisson, who lives in town. Um, she brings with her a wealth of experience from Montgomery County Drug Court. System, so she is scheduled to start here in a few weeks. Um. We also got our, our webinar demonstration on, um. The Case Cracker Interview Room System, which will replace our, uh, current recording system. In our Criminal Investigations Bureau, uh, that the old system is outdated, and, um. Uh, the new system will provide us with a number of investigative abilities and also a smoother transition of providing. Evidence discovery and, uh, snippets from, you know, interviews to the state's attorney's office, so we're looking forward to that. And finally, we had two, uh, additional reports since we last met of the. Water pellets, uh, which came out of a social media challenge, supposed to involve participating. Uh, high school students, but some people have, uh, taken this social media challenge to. Um, shoot the water pellets at unsuspecting pedestrians. So we've, uh, posted on our social media reminder for parental discussions, and of course, for, uh, out looking for individuals that could be doing it. That's all I have.
Um, Mr. Amos, I'm surprised you're not. So I, as you, I think all, I've, I've said this a million times, I eschew social media and absolutely have nothing to do with it, so. I don't know what you, what that means. What, what are, what are pellets?
So there's a social media challenge, and I don't know the specific challenge. I think it was out on either TikTok or one of the ones that. I don't, uh, subscribe to, but initially it had, the challenge was. Um, there's, it's almost like a, a B B propulsion, uh, gun, but it's a water pellet versus a, a solid metal pellet. And, um.
It's like an airsoft gun?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, uh, uh, they were challenging, almost like a, um, a, a mock war between high school groups. And the challenge came out towards the end of the, the, the last quarter. And, um, we, we had some parents that were talking about their kids were doing it. It was just a fun challenge. Some of the kids have taken upon themselves to just drive around in the, mostly in the, the late evening hours. And shoot the pellets out of their car at pedestrians. So that is assault. So we're reminding the parents on social media that they need to have a discussion with their kids, because these are. Almost exclusively teenagers, uh, doing this to prevent that from happening, but we also, um, are looking to identify. Anybody who's doing.
Do, do they ca- cause injuries?
Um, no, not a welt like you would see from a B B shot.
Like a paint, not like a paintball gun.
Yeah, yeah. It's less, less of an impact, but.
Okay.
Still.
Thanks.
That concludes the departmental reports.
All right, thank you, Ms. Amos. So. Time for citizens and comments. Before we do that, uh, we frequently have a representative from McDaniel College to share some news from the Hill, as well as report back. The college leadership on what's happening in the city. Do we have anybody here tonight? They're probably taking a little break from.
Summer, yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll see someone again soon. So we'll move on now to, uh, citizen comments, when we invite the public. To address the mayor's council on any issues of the night's agenda or any other situation. Uh, if the citizen is not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send us your comments or concerns via email. At comments at Westminster M D. That's all one word together, Westminster M D dot com. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. Commenters. Email should include their address and phone number with their comments. Uh, we'll now invite comments from anyone who is present this evening. And let me remind everyone, this is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts and concerns and not exchange in a debate or answer questions. People have questions, we'll have to get back to you with those answers. Uh, so with that, is there anybody with us tonight who wishes to be heard? Okay, hearing no one, then that concludes our agenda. Oh, sir.
I'd like to ask a question. Does the council have anything senior condos? Senior condos.
Senior condos.
We've, we've approved them. No, sir. We do not, but we have a housing department, and we'd be glad to have someone from a housing.
Nobody seems to have anything to do with it. Up in the housing department, the district courts, counties, everybody. Nobody knows anything about it. But they did raise their taxes, and they raised their fees for the sprinkler system. They doubled that a few years ago. But we didn't get no tax breaks for anything for the senior condo. Plus, we don't get any trash pickup, street lighting, with snowing, like individual homes does. And I was wondering if there was some way to get some kind of a tax.
Well, so if you like, what, what, what we, what we can do is, could give your contact information to our city clerk, Mr. Barber. Uh, or to Ms. Amos. We'll have, um, we'll have our director of housing or someone get back in touch with you to see if what there is that we can find out for you about that.
Stick around after the meeting.
Sorry?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we do not. Sir?
Stick around after the meeting, and we'll talk to you.
And could we get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Ford and Coyle.
Okay, and your address, please?
Thirty-two Bella Vita Court in U D, Bella Vita Condos.
All right, thank you. All right. Stick around. We'll get your contact information and we'll follow. Okay, anyone else? With that, that concludes our agenda and the meeting, um, and, uh, we're adjourned. Thank you.